To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice for all.
All right, once again, welcome everyone. Glad to have a lot of visitors today. That's a lot of fun for us. We don't get that many visitors. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes this evening they'd like to see? That means we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Ms. Beals.
Motion by Anderson, second by Beals. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
For yes, motion carries.
Very good. The next item on our agenda is recognitions, our favorite part.
We do have, every May was a really fun time for us because we've traditionally, at this meeting in May, brought in a lot of our fine arts students to recognize them and a lot of their great work that we've all witnessed over the last years, or at least a couple of months, in regards to the show itself. So I'm going to introduce Mr. Odo, who's going to introduce some of our students tonight.
I can have all the students, the fine arts students being recognized, coming over here and stand.
Woo!
That'd be great.
Over here. We'll bite, we promise.
If I could, I'd just like to start by just extending a thank you to the Board of Education for having us here tonight. And it's been a, it's been quite a year, been quite a couple of years. And it is incredible what the fine arts has allowed these young people to do in the last year. It's, I think, the recovery of skill has been our biggest challenge as a staff. We were able to do a lot of the things that we've done in the past in person. And I thought, coming into the year, that we'd have to limp into some of these things and do them the best we could. But it turns out, they hit it out of the park. And in so many different ways. There's too many activities that have happened for us, for us to name them all. So we're going to recognize these students that have been, have won awards at a district and state level. And it's been, it's really awesome to do that. So thanks for coming tonight. I know it's hard to get those seniors in here. I don't know how many seniors are here. But man, when they check out on Sunday, that's it, right?
I recognize the hair on one of them. I handed you your diploma on Sunday.
That's awesome. So we'll start out with music. We'll start with music program. And we'll start with ILMEA All District. And ILMEA is, is one of the areas where we can recognize students individually for their work as musicians. And if they qualify for the state level, that's the highest honor that a music student in public school can get. So you can see, if I just click through the description, right there, that there are, there are over 100 schools that participate in our district, seven. So it's Lake and Cook and Eastern McHenry County. Auditions were held back in October. And then there was an ILMEA All State Festival in January. And you could see there that last bullet point from Mr. Tribbley, our band director, that being selected there at the state level is the highest honor that can be achieved. So let me just read through the names that were awarded honors at the district level. So we have Annalisa Kress for the French horn. She's a junior. There's Jeff Maglessang, who's a trumpet player, senior. Griffin Fox, bass trombone, as a sophomore.
Oh, nice.
Jazz band, our jazz band's amazing. So you see a bunch of names up here, of course. They are phenomenal. Maddox Mazepust is a tenor sax player, senior. Isabella, oh, I'm sorry. Isabella Alcevar, trumpet player, as a senior. Yep. Faith Cabolfin, piano, senior. Griffin Fox, once again, bass trombone, sophomore. Hillary Fleming for trumpet. And Jeff Maglessang, again, trumpet, as a senior. Tony Smith, bass, as a junior. And Paula Villa Gomez, Villa Gomez, excuse me. Okay. Now, the All State Honor went to Griffin Fox for All State Trombone, sophomore. Griffin, here. Griffin, there's Griffin. Step off, Griffin.
Hey, come on, Griffin.
Take your, take. That's tremendous. The anchor of the jazz band next year, right? They're going to be you? All right. That's good. For choir, the, we had two students earn All District in choir. Kate Panagiotopoulos and, and Jay Roche. Just as a side note, I heard Jay, when she, I think as a freshman, sing the National Anthem at a basketball game. And she, and that gym's hard to fill with a voice. And she filled it and then some with her big voice. She's an amazing talent. Theater, going to theater, we went to the contest play, IHSA Contest Play. And our students did an amazing performance. And these five students earned All State. Mackenzie Volker. See, they got their sweatshirts on. It's easy to tell them. Becca Katz. There she is. Jackson Cole, not able to make it tonight. Maddox Mazepust. And Danielle Michaelak. Daniel? Michaelak. Daniel Michaelak. Sorry, buddy. All right. So Daniel, I feel like if you'd just taken ceramics, we could have worked all this out in the ceramics class. All right. Now, just to recognize the visual art students. We went down to the state art show at Comiskey Park. I'll never call it anything else. It's Comiskey Park to me. Right next door is a, an art gallery where we have, we bring in over 200 schools from around the state of Illinois. We have a state art competition. We had five, actually six students recognized as All State artists at the IHSA All State Festival. One of those students did this piece. This is a digital drawing, digital painting, actually, is Jamie Arroyo. She's a senior. And then, I don't think Jamie, Jamie could not make it tonight. Logan MacLeod did this amazing photograph in the digital photo category. Logan's a junior. Charlize Gerios, senior, for this photography piece, top five. Hayden Marlena Onal. This is actually a digital time arts piece, which means it's animated. But this is a PDF of that piece. So it's just sitting still, looking at us. But it does move. Very cool piece. She's a student over at Oak Plain, sophomore. This slide doesn't do this painting justice. This is a triptych. It's three pieces done by three different students, all tied together to be displayed like this. And that, those three students are Alyssa Cash, Amy Kostadinov, and Jamie Arroyo. I think Amy's the only one that could make it tonight, right? But beautiful painting. And then the, this student is here with us tonight. So make sure you give a wave. This is Ava Suarez. Ava's a senior. And did this amazing piece. So those are actual potato peels on the right. And it's a painting of peeling a potato. How cool is that? Pretty amazing. Then, on the next thing that we did as an art staff is go to the North Suburban Conference Art Festival. And we had 10 students recognized as all-conference students. And I don't have pictures of their pieces, but I do have the list of those 10 that we can recognize tonight. So again, if I call your name, just give a wave to the Board of Education, if you would. Ariana Gerios, Grace Liu, Gabby Montano, Jerian Kelly, Alyssa, Alyssa Cash, Alyssa Cash, Ava Suarez, Nicole Gramaca, Jamie Arroyo, Issha Borda Wicker, and Christine Nemeth. Congratulations to those students. And then, at the Live Arts Festival, we had over 31 award winners. But we didn't want to bring all 31 here tonight. It's too many. But really what we, what we had to do with the Live Arts Festival is replace a sponsor that we had that gave out $1,000 scholarship to our art students. And so we started a Best in Show category. And there were three categories for Best in Show, 2D, 3D, and Digital Art. And Trinity did this amazing graphite drawing. And that won the 2D category. Trinity's over there. Thoughtful artist, Trinity is. It's, she's amazing. I mean, that is like a photograph. It's just incredible. In the 3D category, unable to join us tonight is Gabby Montano. If you were at Live Arts and were able to see this in person, it was really incredible. I can just tell you quickly that she started out with five pieces of insulating styrofoam from Home Depot stacked up, glued together. And it was like four feet by four feet. She started sawing away and ended up with those bones up there. I mean, it took her three months to do it. It was incredible work. I watched her do it every day in class. And just an amazing piece of sculpture up there. And that was Gabby's. And then Logan MacLeod won the digital category for this action photo here. I don't even know where that happened. And I wonder if that's Logan taking a selfie. It's pretty good. It's amazing.
Let's hope not.
Logan, is Logan not here? Logan, I thought he was coming today. Okay. So that's, we're, again, we're grateful to be back. We're grateful to do it in person. And to rebuild these skills that you see up here has been a real honor for us as a staff. And our students are just, I mean, the one thing I've loved about Warren since the day I got here is the amount of talent that comes through here every year. Never lets us down. So thank you for coming tonight.
Yep, we're going to take one or two more pictures. You guys stay put just for a sec? You're good, Mr. Odo. Yeah. Mr. Odo, want to get that picture? Yeah, it'd be great. Thanks, Rock.
Everybody say cheese. Oh, well, you have mass on, never mind. Awesome. That's awesome.
Believe it, we got one more coming. Thank you. Feel free to go home and study, except you seniors.
We do have one more group of recognitions tonight. I believe, where's Mr. Pagan?
He's coming around the corner.
We are also recognizing some Skills USA students, I think. Is that correct, Mr. Pagan?
That is correct, sir. Yes. So, hi, good evening, everyone. How we doing?
Good.
My name's Zach Pagan. Most probably know me as the dean of students here at Warren Township High School. However, this year, I assumed the role as tech campus coordinator as well. So in my first year in the new role, had an opportunity to work with amazing group of students, 191 of them, to be exact. And we have three special students here tonight that we like to recognize for their success in the Skills USA competition. All three of these students qualified for the national competition held in Atlanta in their respective disciplines. So also here tonight with us is Derek Burris, which is the principal over at Tech Campus. And I'm going to allow him to come up and kind of talk about what the Skills USA competition entails. And then we'll bring the students up for recognition once you know what they're competing in.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Thanks, Zach. I'm Derek Burris. I'm the principal of the Lake County Tech Campus. And it is an honor to be able to showcase some of our students. Skills USA is kind of the extracurricular event that career and tech ed centers have. Our students participate in skills that they're learning all throughout the school year at the state level. We sent 80 kids down to the state competition. And the three students that we're going to talk about today are actually state champions. And they're going to go to the national championship this month, well, in June, and be able to compete in Atlanta, Georgia for a national championship. So we're really excited about that, to have three students out of over 1,500 from the, from Warren, to be able to compete at the national level is no small feat. And these students did an amazing job in both cosmetology and in their game programming classes. So I'll allow Zach to showcase it and.
And I think one thing to note is what's cool about Skills USA is that the professionals in the field are the ones that are.
They're the judges.
They're the judges in rating the kids. So they're, they're doing it in front of skilled professionals that, that really have professional experience in that area and can, and can judge them on their work. So first, I'm going to bring up Lydia Forbes and Susan Cantu. Is in the nail care competition. And then Susan was her nail care model. And then, secondly, I'd like to bring up Kealan Casapeo. Qualified in the area of interactive application and video game creation. And Lydia, you're welcome to share a few words if you want to. I know you've expressed interest.
Hi, I'm Lydia. This is Susan, my model. She came with me to Skills USA. We did win gold, which was really fun. It was a really good experience. We got to meet people from all over Illinois. And we did qualify to go to Atlanta, Georgia to compete in nationals against the rest of the states in nail care. I'm one of the cosmetology students from Tech Campus. It's a really good opportunity for high school students to come out with a license so that they can start working immediately after school, either through college or just in general. Skills USA was really fun. There was a lot of freedom. We got to go swimming. And it was just a really fun. Susan, do you want to say anything?
Hi, it's Susan. It was a really nice experience. Like, I saw so many, like, people, like, making new friends. Like, it was a great experience, especially, like, especially being the model. There was still a lot of, like, nervousness between that, even though I'm not the one doing it. There's not much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Went out of Tech Campus, and they really appreciate the opportunity to, to work in their trades and their skills to, to succeed. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving along on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the reception of visitors. I checked the book. Nobody had signed in. So nobody has signed in to address the board. Three minutes, does have your say.
Really quickly, I just want to really let you know that I was blown away by Skills. And if you guys have never gone to Skills USA and saw what was being competed, you know, who was competing, you would be blown away. I was kind of surprised that Warren themselves didn't have more students represented, represented. Cybersecurity, they were kids winning for cybersecurity. Like, reg, you, you name it. It was there. And I was really impressed with that. I just, I would have loved to have seen Warren students represented because I know robotics was there. I was like, and these people are getting really recognized. And what I'm blessed about, and I'll be honest with you guys, my daughter got As in Tech Campus, which boosts her GPA. She got a $23,000 scholarship to Carroll. So people don't, you have to understand, like, there's a lot of kids who are going to take a gap year, maybe never go to college. They need to be encouraged to go to Tech Campus as much as possible. Because they come out with a skill. She now can work and make more money than a lot of people in her field as cosmetologist. And while she's going to college, that was her plan. So I just want to encourage you guys to please and keep encouraging the school and the students to do that. It's really, it really was a blessing. If you ever get a chance to go to Skills USA, you would be blown away at what the competition is really like and what they do. So just.
Thank you so much.
What I would share.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. We love positive feedback. We don't get it that often, but we love it. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board this evening? I know pretty much everybody here, so I guess I'll assume no. All right, next item on the agenda is the president's report. President is not here this evening. Does anybody have any future topics they'd like to start bringing forward? Okay. My app just closed. All right. We have a partnership report this evening from the Lake County Tech Campus.
Thank you so much again. Again, my name's Derek Burris. I'm the principal of the Lake County Tech Campus. And it is great what Warren is doing for all of the students of CTE. You are our largest senders to the Tech Campus year over year. And it is great to see the support that not only Dr. Algrim gives, but Mr. Parrott and Ms. Bertola. And we're so excited to have them and partners with Zach Pagan, who is an amazing liaison to continuously push students to go towards CTE. It's something that we're truly grateful for. And I know your students are grateful for as well. So Dr. Algrim and Pat Healy asked me to speak today regarding the Tech Campus and a little bit about what we do here, and give you guys some ideas of all the, the things that are going on every day. So a little bit about us is, we are made up of 22 member school districts, all of Lake County, some of McHenry County, three schools in McHenry come to us. And we are the largest CTE school in the state of Illinois. It's not something that we don't take for granted. We are very proud of what it is that we do. Our teachers are all from industry. They have extensive ability to know their content area, they're masters of their curriculum. And they come to us ready to train our students for the next one, five, 10 years into the future, to pursue a pathway, not only into, right into the workforce, but also into the post-secondary education, be it at CLC, a four-year university, or into a certificate-style program. Our classes go for two hours a day. So students are giving up their electives at, at their high schools in order to come to us and take their classes here. We, we send kids to, Warren sends kids to us all three sessions of our day. So students from Warren are, through our, throughout our halls, all, all afternoon and morning. Right now, Warren has 200 students enrolled at the Tech Campus. I think he said it was like 181. And that, that number is still the highest number that we have. Our current enrollment is at about 1,512 students. That's the lowest number we've had in the past eight years. And we attribute that to what happened last year with COVID. We weren't able to get into the classrooms of your school to recruit and to showcase what it is about our students. Students were going back to their friends and saying, man, I had the best remote lesson I've ever had in a career and tech ed class. So what happened was our numbers kind of dipped last year. That is completely changed for next year. And I'll get into that in the future slides. But all of our classes are preparing students for careers. 20 of the 22 classes have dual credit associated with them, meaning that while they're in high school, they're also getting college credits at the College of Lake County. Almost every single one of our programs has some sort of certificate attached to it, be it a cosmetology license, like Lydia and Susan got today, or certain certifications in welding or firefighting, game programming, nursing. Students come out with a CNA licensure. Students come out with their EMTB license right out of high school. They can jump right on an ambulance and work in the field. So those are some of the kind of cool, neat things that we're doing every single, every single day at the Tech Campus. We are in the middle of our five-year strategic plan that we work through, that has major areas of focus in curriculum, programming, college and career readiness, community engagement, increasing our awareness to not only students, but the greater community. We've been around since 1977. And people come up to me all the time saying, I wish if I knew this, this school was here. When I was a kid, I would have taken it. Well, we have been here. And so our job is to make sure that we're teaching everyone that knows about us what Tech Campus is, to kind of showcase what it is. Showing pictures really doesn't do it justice. We'd love for you guys to come out, take a tour of the building, really at any time that you guys want. And we're there to show you around. Come during the school day, because that's when it's most exciting, when the kids are really cranking away on stuff. But some of our strategic highlights that we've been working on through our strategic plan is this year, we have taken seven teachers and done a standards-based grading pilot. With that pilot, CTE lends itself to standards-based grading. The students are doing project-based learning at all times. They're mastering what it is that they need to do. And that's the whole premise of what standards-based grading is. So we've piloted it throughout this entire year of creating rubrics of mastery, as opposed to just grade levels of 90, 80, 70, 60. We want kids to make sure that they know exactly what it is that they're doing before they get into the field. And so next year, we're taking those seven teachers, and they're going to lead the rest of the school into standards-based grading for all of our coursework. We created a 10-hour Give 10 internship this year, where all of our students in our automotive program are out at local automotive shops and dealerships, giving 10 hours of their time. And the dealership gives 10 hours back to us to really train the students what it's like to be in the field. And then after that, we had a grant that we were able to pay the students to stay on that internship. So the, there was no, no risk for the automotive departments to have to pay the kids. We were able to pay them. We're going to be able to continue that on into next year. So we're really excited about that. And we're going to expand it into other programs with a, we have created a college and career pathway coordinator that will also offer an endorsement that will go on all of the students' transcripts as they leave college. We focus on service projects and partnerships with the College of Lake County. We use a lot of our ESAR funds to do a boot camp over the summer where we bring students in that were going to be seniors in their second year, or going into their first session of Tech Campus, and build on that to kind of start all the hands-on activities that they're going to get. Really gets them motivated to come into the school. They get a whole week of training before school starts. And then they get to be the student leaders during the first few weeks of school. So it's just an opportunity to get extra help, extra learning, and really reinvigorate kids to join into the Tech Campus. And just a few other things. The last major thing that I'll talk about is, we have built in a literacy professional development into our program. A lot of our students are coming in. They have to read highly technical work for their different program areas. They're reading college-level texts. But also, we want them to be able to read and speak and write at a level that is conducive to customer service. Almost all of our jobs are working with customer service. So we brought in a literacy consultant this year from the College of Elmhurst. And she has been working with our staff for every single one of our institutes, for half of our institute day. Plus, she's come in to, once a month, for each of our staff meetings, to do a in-depth, deep dives into training on different literacy skills and techniques. This is something that is more commonplace in a comprehensive high school. But at a CTE school, to teach literacy skills isn't something that's normally part of our everyday curriculum. So this is something that Tech Campus is kind of at the forefront of where CTE is going to go into the future. So it's something we're really excited about. And we have a great board of directors, who Dr. Algrim is also part of, he's our president, actually, who support these kinds of out-of-the-box thinking that allow for us to really challenge ourselves and our staff, and then our students, in ways to grow them, not only in the program areas and the pathways that they want to pursue their passions in, but in the areas that are going to help them in all of their schoolwork. So this is a look at our enrollment since FY14, which happened to be my first year at the Tech Campus. So we were at a very high in my first year. And then we kind of lulled off. But then we started growing, growing, growing. We hit 1825, which was our previous cap of our height. And then last year happened with COVID, we went down to 1512. We went down to 1512, not something that we're very proud of. But through the marketing efforts of, of my team, we have been able to build up to over 2,075 students for next year. So it's something that's huge, and just wait until we see Warren's numbers. So here we are at 375 back in FY14, and then the lull again, but then we started rising and then dipped way down this year. But next year, we right back into one of our highest years that we've ever had at the tech campus. So it's something that we're really excited about. So much thanks goes out to Zach and his team of counselors that have really encouraged students to be able to go out, and then my team that comes out here and talks to you guys, and then your students who just do an excellent job of talking about all the great things that tech campus has to offer. So those are some of the different things that we do with enrollment each year. This is our program enrollment, and it's hard to see, but you can see the cosmetology, auto service, certified nurse assisting, medical assisting, welding fabrication, and culinary arts are our high program areas. We're excited about all those programs. They continue to grow every year for a variety of different reasons for what students want. The medical field is really blossoming in the workforce outside in the real world, and so that those numbers are seen. The numbers continue to grow also because I think of, because of COVID, and students see that they're out there to be able to help and make a difference in everybody's lives. So those continue to grow. We're starting a new program next year called Industrial Technology, which is a manufacturing program housed out at the ATC, which is the old Lowe's building for CLC. They're going to, students are going to be out there working on all of the new manufacturing programming that they have and really kind of the state of art, of the art manufacturing area. So we're excited to kind of start that program up. So it's got 15 kids next year. Hopefully that continues to grow, and we're at 200 kids like we are with cosmetology or nursing. These are our career clusters, transportation and logistics, manufacturing, information technology, our human services area with criminal justice and, and our preschool. We have a fully functioning preschool on campus, and then health services, firefighting, EMS, medical assisting, biomedical sciences, and certified nurse assisting. We cluster all these together because then we have focused career expositions where we bring in over 85 business and industry specific to that career pathway so that students are able to walk through, and we get them all, they create their own resumes, they have mock interviews right there. Some are leading to direct hires and internships and apprenticeships right while they're doing these career expos. It's a little bit different than a high school does it because high schools generally fill their cafeteria with a multitude of different areas and job skills, which is great because kids can kind of pick and choose what they want. We try to focus it for where these kids' pathways are really belonging, and they get to go and explore that area specifically. This is just some of the top, top growing industries that are coming up in the world. Most of them have to do with some sort of healthcare industry, and you could see that in our medical assisting biomedical CNA programs that they continue to grow and build off of each other. But then information technology, like the lady had said, we have a cybersecurity program that's starting up. It's going to be in its second year next year. And yeah, I believe we will have some skill, kids at Skills USA in cybersecurity in the coming years, so we're excited about that. The teacher actually is our Skills USA sponsor for the program, so he's not going to let us not have kids in cybersecurity. So we're excited about that. So that's my presentation in a nutshell. I'd love to take some questions, but if not, I wish you guys a, yeah, sure.
You have a question. The, you kind of answered it because you said you have one program that's at your new facility, which you called it the.
ATC, the Advanced Technology Center.
Yeah, ATC Center. And I, and you said you have one program out there which is going to be the industrial or.
Technology.
Manufacturing technology. Are you planning on, is there going to be more programs you think out there as time goes on?
So that, that's a great question. That's actually the College of Lake County's campus, and we are on the College of Lake County, but we're our own institution. So all of our programs are able to be housed internally. The ATC provided a great partnership opportunity because they're building that manufacturing center that we don't have the lab for at this time. But they're also building a giant welding lab. We have a enormous welding bay that has over 36 bays, and we're adding another 15 bays this summer. So we're going to be able to house our welding here because what it does is it builds that nice transition from high school welding that earns dual credit, and then the kids are able to transition off, and they'll take ATC, they'll, they'll go take welding at the ATC when they start at the College of Lake County.
Once they graduate more, yeah, they move to the next level.
Absolutely, yeah.
More advanced skills or whatever.
Okay. Yeah.
Can you talk to, it's just more curiosity. So years ago, it's probably changed, there was always this dilemma, I guess you could say, with the instructors where it's a public school, so you need to have typical licensure, I would imagine, but part of the power of some of these programs is real-world experience, and those people may not have a typical teaching license. So do your instructors, it could be both, do they, are you somehow exempt from standard teacher licensure and, because that's the power is getting real practitioners in and teaching the kids this stuff?
Absolutely. So the state of Illinois allows for a special dispensation or agreement that as long as a teacher has an associate's degree and 2,000 hours of work experience, they're able to teach at the junior, senior high school level. So all of our teachers are coming in with huge amounts of work experience, and they don't, they didn't, 90% of them didn't take the traditional educational track that I did because I'm a history teacher by trade. So what my job is, what I see, my, my job and my administrative team's job is, is to help them become better teachers, right? They are the masters of their curriculum. They know it backwards and forwards. I do not know how to weld for the life of me. I've tried, but I don't know how to do it. And so we rely on them to really lead off into what the curriculum is going to be. But then what I do, my associate principal, our professional development coordinator do, is build out professional development that will help them to master things like classroom management, online learning, building, building into them as the, the facets that were built into us in college to become educators and then through our student teaching. So it's a non-traditional means to the same ending that our math teachers and English teachers and social studies teachers have, have here.
Are you allowed to give them a year or two? Are you given allowances to give them a year or two to get that associates? Or do they have to have it right out of the gate?
No, they don't have to have it right out of the gate.
That's great. With CLC right there, I mean.
So there, there's a lot of options that our teachers have. So with 8,000 hours, you don't have to have an associate's degree. So then what we do is we do in, in our collective bargaining agreement, we have some tuition reimbursements that allow for the teachers to then go and begin to get their associate's degree. So we had three teachers finish their associates this year, which is just making them better educators in the long run because they're taking educational courses. They're improving their, their skill set and building on what it is that they can deliver to the kids then.
Now, fantastic. I, I think it's, you can talk theoretical all you want, but to hear from people that have, have been in the industry and know the job, I think that's where the power comes in, so.
So.
I'm thrilled to hear what you're saying.
I, I appreciate that. And then to elaborate on that, now imagine this. So I'm a welding instructor that's been in the classroom for 10 years. 10 years ago, I knew everything there was about welding. Well, industry continues to change, right? So then what we do is we bring in all of our business and industry partners. Each of our programs has an advisory committee of business and industry that's local that come in and show us where welding is today and where welding is going to be in five years, because really we're training the kids for what they're going to be in in five years. And so we build that then into them because our advisors are advising, assisting, and advocating for not only our programs, but our students and where we're going to take that next step.
Builds a pipeline and just a great partnership between the local Lake County industry or McHenry County industry and then the schools and then our schools. It's, it's a really kind of nice program that you run there.
I really, I really appreciate it. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of work to build up, and it is just blossoming and growing in ways that we, we can't be happier with.
You, you have a great partnership as well. I actually took your welding classes at CLC a couple of years ago and passed. And passed. Is there, are freshmen allowed to go to these programs? Is there a point in time?
There, so we, we do have 99% of our students are juniors and seniors, and we have taken on some sophomores. It just really depends on where that student's academic pathway is at the point, you know, and how many classes they've gotten because they are taking away from their cores and different things that they need to do in freshman and sophomore year. But we've done a couple pilots with our medical assisting program and some of our project lead the way for schools that don't offer project lead the way.
Couldn't, I would reinforce, I, I think these programs are awesome. Just awesome.
Sure. Let our numbers bounce back. That's very.
Yeah, very important.
It's almost like a, you know, there's been enough Zoom, Google Meet, virtual, and, and kids are desiring more hands-on learning potentially in addition to all the recruiting efforts as well, but you almost wonder if that plays a part into it as well. Thank you. Today's current climate, if, if a student is interested going down the trade-type route, this is like a guaranteed career.
Hundred percent, and it's a great opportunity.
You can't find enough of these people.
Right. It's an opportunity for kids to learn that they don't like it either.
Right.
And that's okay too, because if you don't want to be a nurse because you didn't like blood, you did that while you were in high school as opposed to your first two years of college and then have to change your, your whole perspective. So yeah, it's a, it's a great opportunity for, for students in every which way, and we can't thank Warren enough for all the things that you guys have done for us over the years, and we hope to grow the partnership and continue it for many years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Next will be community reports, which we don't have any, so superintendent's report.
Okay, we are on to the superintendent's report. First off, for the board's review, in board docs are the monthly reports. We did have one FOIA from a Calvin Lansbury regarding administrative benefits. So there was one FOIA since our last meeting. A couple other things to think about. I do think that the joint conference is November 18th through 21st downtown, so that's just something for the board to be thinking about individually and collectively. Just wanted to make sure that you knew that those dates were there. We're working on our May edition of our Warren Connection, which our intent for this month's edition is just to highlight and celebrate some of the end-of-the-year kind of special recognitions, graduations, the special accolades for many of our seniors. So that'll be in our May edition of our Warren Connection. I know our June, we have a policy committee meeting at 5:30 on June the 7th, so we'll make sure all board members are aware of that and send invitations out, especially to our policy committee members. We do have, we, well, at least in June, also at our June meeting, we will have some highlights from spring sports because we've already got some students who have already been recognized with state medals at the state conference, at least in girls' track, I believe. Looking for a little confirmation there from some of my friends. Girls' track will definitely have a representative at our June meeting, and we have a number of other teams that are still participating, including our boys' track and field team, which is a number of them, eight or so of them are more than that, a lot more than eight, seven events. So it's probably seven or eight events. So it's probably, you know, 15 or so student athletes that are participating at the state meet, which is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday in Charleston at Eastern Illinois University. So some may come out of that as well, but at our June meeting, we'll recognize many of our spring athletes like we recognized our live, our fine arts students tonight. I wanted to make sure, we talked a little bit about, first off, let's go to the treasurer's report. Brandon, can you go forward just a, Dr. Engel? Whoop, he's got it. Never mind, he's got it. It's all yours.
So we're going to go through the fund balance breakdown as of the end of April. Fund balance is at 26.1 million. Debt services upside down is $500,000, so if you subtract that out, you're up to 26,000, or excuse me, 26.6 million. Subtract out capital projects at 200,000, brings it down to 26.4 million. Minus the restricted portion of our remaining bonds, this is our restricted portion of working cash, brings it down to 16.4 million. From there, as you can see, 16.4 million is the equivalent of 22.7% of our annual revenue, and again, as we recommend, at least 25%. For comparison, 12 years ago, the district had a fund balance of just over 57 million. At that time, it had debt service of right around 4 million, brings the total down to 53, capital projects about 27.4, remaining with $25.6 million available, which then made up 50.2% of available fund balance. So here's, going through the treasurer's report. As of the end of April, this is across all revenues right now, we're actually trending right around 58.7%. Year-to-date actuals, this is all local, excuse me, local revenues coming in, we're about 68.12. The fall, excuse me, the, the fall taxes should be coming in here relatively, excuse me, spring taxes should be coming in relatively soon. When I was speaking to the Lake County Vassal from there, he said possibly a distribution on the 27th, so it should be later this week for our first one coming up here in May. Year-to-date sources from the state, we're trending actually rather high, we're about 89.85. They've been actually really on it this year, which is good. So on the expenditure side, year-to-date, we're at 77.54, which we're ending the year here pretty well. If you look at salaries and benefits, as of right now, we're at 72.67. Projection should be right around 74. We will have a three payroll coming up in July, so that'll, I know this can be for next fiscal year, but we're still paying off stuff from this year. And other objects, including special education, we're at about 88.6%. We should be right around 81, so it is a little bit higher than normal. As you can see, we still have the negative kind of trending data or dollar amount as we draw down on our fund balances there, which we should be, like I said before, May will begin an influx of cash coming in, which should be rather helpful exceptionally for our June payrolls. So fund balances, this breaks it down by ending fund balance for each one of the funds here. You can see we started out with 29.9 million. Revenues for the month were 2.8, expenditures 6.7, ending fund balance at $26 million. And then this is year-to-date. Beginning fund balance at the end, or at the beginning of the year was 35.6 million. Revenue's year-to-date 47.7, expenditures year-to-date 57.2, and remaining fund balance, available fund balance as of the end of April at $26 million. Any questions?
Thanks, Mike. Gio, can you start to make your way to the podium? I'm going to talk about one more thing, and then I think you have two things that we wanted to talk about. First, I just wanted to make sure that, thank the board for your participation in graduation on Sunday. It was great to have our class together, unified graduation for our class, and it all seemed, logistically, it all seemed to go well. Credit to Rob and Dr. Kirk who facilitated most of it. Everybody pitches in, but it's obviously that made it look a lot easier than all the work that goes into it. So thanks to Rob and all of our building administrators for all your work on that, and thanks to the board for making it a special day as well. So we're going to talk a little bit about two things. First one is, I heard we got some good news, Gio, in regards to recognition?
We did. So we were just notified that we were recognized as in 2022, once again, as by U.S. News World Report as one of the best high schools in America or in the United States. We were ranked 2,977 out of 23,800 public high schools across the country, as public and private high schools, so all high schools. Puts that, puts us in the top 17% of all high schools nationally within the state of Illinois. There's 1,292 high schools in the state of Illinois, public and private, and we are ranked 115, so that puts us in the top 9% of all schools in the state of Illinois. Now, the interesting thing, looking back just to last year's numbers, we were 109th in 2021, and we held steady, even with all the challenges, we've held steady within the state in terms of performance. When we look at nationally, our numbers are down a little bit, but there's a lot of variables, especially with different learning environments and different rules and regulations during COVID that impacted those numbers dramatically from one area of the country to another. So great news, a great job by our, our teachers and our students. That's, that's really is fact, big factors in that recognition is graduation rate, AP, number of AP classes offered, number of honors classes offered, and then success rates on AP tests and standardized testing such as the SAT.
Very nice.
Chris, when we come up for the new business item, can you talk a little bit, there was a question in our last board meeting about just digital versus hard copy. I think we can talk about it when we talk about your, the textbook approval that's on the new item, new business. Thanks, Chris. And just, I think the last piece on my superintendent's report was only that as a reminder, we do not, the district is closed on Monday for Memorial Day, so make sure we keep that in mind, and on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week, which are the next three days. We do have early dismissals, both of our campuses, just two hours earlier than their normal dismissal time. That's all I have for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, John. All right, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. So unless anybody has any changes, I'll make the motion. So I move to approve the consent agenda. So I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personnel recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers one twenty through one twenty-five, as posted, and athletics and activities personnel recommendations per Exhibit B, number fifty B through fifty-nine B, as posted, the payment of bills dated May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, in the amount of four million, six hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and six cents, the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of May tenth, two thousand twenty-two, the acceptance and acknowledgements of gifts to the district as presented, and the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two final public school calendar as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson and second by Drake. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Well, I'm glad we got the this calendar finalized three days before the end of school. We do that all the time. I know there's minor changes, I just think it's kind of, it seems funny.
Yeah, it's all right, and that's good for information for the boards. In that last version, we take out those emergency days that are sitting there, so we have only a little bit of time by which we need to kind of confirm that we're not going to use any more emergency days in the calendar, so that's actually the one change in there. So it's good. Thank you for the board's approval. Gio, you gonna start making your way forward?
New business.
All right, we get two things, yep. First one, wanna talk a little bit about textbooks. Also wanna talk a little bit about that conversation that happened last time about digital versus hard copy.
Right, so our novels and textbooks are kind of two different entities when we talk about instructional resources. So in the district, the vast majority now of our textbooks are online, or if it was originally like a math textbook, for example, we we hold on to for a long time. We've digitized those, a lot of those, so we we provide them through PDF format rather than issuing the hardcover versions of that. But with copyright law, we have to hold on to whatever books that we're using. So if we're, if we have a geometry book, say, to go out to a hundred fifty kids via PDF, well, we need to have a hundred fifty copies of that geometry book. So it's just kind of the copyright laws that we we have, so. But in general, as we've renewed textbooks, we have been purchasing online textbooks. And so when you get buy those online textbooks, they usually come with a five or six-year license, and we usually purchase along with those, and they come in bundles at a discount, so we can have some hardcover versions of those, because there's things that happen, kids need accommodations, some kids might not be able to, like Chromebooks might not work one day, or something might happen where we might need some hardcover versions of books. So we do have some of those onsite in classrooms, this is assistance for teachers. But as we purchase new textbooks, we are purchasing online textbooks on five, on five or usually five or six-year licenses, and that will renew as those come up on cycle. And that, the nice thing about that is it does force us into a continuous review or renewal cycle of our academic, our academic materials, and then every six years, we're getting refreshed instructional resources for teachers. So that's a nice piece to that. So I would say over, definitely within the past five years, as we've adopted new textbooks, we've been adopting almost one hundred percent of the time, online books. The only difference would be sometimes we have things where there's not really an online version, like one of the things in front of you tonight, like the AP World materials, there's sometimes there's just source books and things of that nature that just are their print, and that's what we have to work with. So, but we do try to find on, for textbooks, we try to find them online, because that's a nice way to provide more interactive content. A lot of times now, they integrate right into Canvas, which is a nice feature for our students, and it kind of brings all of their learning into one place. So that's the textbook side of it. When we talk about novels, that's a little bit of a different type of learning. So when we're reading in a novel, there's annotation skills that we're doing, just looking at purely from an academic perspective. Annotating on a on a computer screen is not an intuitive or an easy thing for kids to do. There is research out there, that reading on a computer screen, when you're doing that type of close reading that we do in our English classes, the retention is actually a little bit less versus when you're maybe reading more informational text, like a textbook-type reading. Is that's on the academic side, it's it's a lot more user-friendly for the kids, it's a better learning experience for the kids still to utilize those, an actual hard, hard copy of of a novel. On the licensing side, the licensing for novels is not at the same place that textbooks is. It's not clean, it's oftentimes more expensive than purchasing a print novel, and it's not, and it's an annual license. So it's not like we buy it once and spend five dollars on this novel, and then we own that novel for five dollars in perpetuity. We'd still be paying five dollars a year for that novel. So the academic benefit doesn't out, like the the cost savings would, does not even equal the academic benefit. It's actually, seems to be at this point, not beneficial for our kids, and since there's no significant cost savings, sometimes it's actually more expensive. We did look at that type of a system two years ago, and it just didn't make sense to to move down that road.
Thanks for that, Chris. And so the item that's on our new business item are our new textbooks for next year?
That is correct. So we have new textbooks, so these are the new textbooks that were brought forward for next year. So our our PLTs and our departments get together, they review a variety of textbooks, they look at the ones that they have, the one, different ones that are out there, review those against state standards, AP standards, the, as I mentioned, the available ancillary materials, so what what digital materials do they have for students, what digital materials do we have for teachers? So, and then we move forward based on what they feel is the best fit with all of that criteria. So this year, music theory, AP World, health, entrepreneurship, a French one, government and civics, AP Spanish language and culture, and I think I missed AP World History, are all purchasing new textbooks. We also sell back old textbooks every year. We go through a process in all of our inventory, we pick out anything that we're not using, and we sell those back to resellers, and we usually get about twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars a year back for those old textbooks that we are, are no longer in use for us. So this year, our total budget is approximately a hundred thirty-three thousand, a hundred sixty-three dollars, which is a significant reduction from years past.
Okay. Any questions? All right. I move to approve the new textbooks for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year as presented.
Second.
Ms. Beals?
Motion by Anderson, second by Beals. Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Let's we talk through the school-wide plan?
Yes, so last month, the board approved our waiver for application for district Title One school-wide program. This past week, we received notice that our waiver was approved. So what that means then is we have to now implement a school-wide plan. So one of the things that was happening as we were building our case for why a school-wide plan would be, a school-wide program would be very beneficial for us, we were kind of building that plan alongside that. So what you have in front of you in board docs is an outline of how during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we would implement our plan to implement a Title One school-wide program. So just a couple things with that. Remember, it's not, it's similar, for us, it's the same thing, but it is a school-wide program, not a district-wide program. So if we had multiple schools in the district, it would only apply to the schools that were granted that program. So since we are one, one school district, it kind of feels the same, but I just want to make sure that we all understand that. And then also, it is an annual process. So next year, at the, kind of around the same time, we will be filing another waiver if we are not over forty percent. And then if we are granted that waiver, and next year, we will probably be in a position we will bring the plan and the waiver to the board at the same time, so we can approve both of those, so we can even move a little bit quicker next year, now that we have a little bit more experience with the school-wide program. Any questions about the plan?
Nope. So I move to approve the school-wide Title One plan as presented.
Second.
Ms. Beals?
Motion by Anderson, second by Beals. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Diesel fuel bid, Mike?
Back on April twentieth, the district went out for bid for diesel fuel for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We had the diesel fuel bid opening on May sixteenth. We had four vendors that came out and submitted bids. The lowest bidder was Avalon at a price of ten cents above the index. We felt very fortunate that it was not much higher. Last year's rate, just to give a comparison, was also ten cents. We've had bids in excess of a hundred percent more than that, so I've included the results of the bid information there in the tabulation sheet. At this time, the administration recommends Avalon for next year for the FY twenty-three school year. Any questions?
Just a real quick question. And I apologize if it's in here somewhere, but do we not, so we get our own fuel, diesel fuel. This is for the buses.
Correct.
Is there not any kind of partnership we could have with Village Gurnee or other government entities that have fleets of trucks where there's buying power in gas?
We actually looked into Village of Gurnee. We actually get our regular fuel, non-diesel there. The issue is congestion and our buses and their area for diesel fueling. We have.
A logistical issue of getting our fleet of buses, probably with their couple of pumps.
They they have the same, correct, yeah. We have our fuel depot are out there, it's filled up twice a week right now, and we just run our buses through there. It's much more convenient, we're not going nearly as far.
Yeah, makes sense.
No, but we've definitely explored that, but we do have regular gasoline through the village.
I mean, it makes sense.
Yep.
Move to approve the diesel fuel bill and award Avalon as presented for the twenty-two, twenty-three year.
Second. Motion by Drake and second by Beals. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is a recommendation for an amend, an amendment to our serious safety hazards application to the state of Illinois. Back in the fall, the board approved six through Gene Turst leadership and recommendation, there were six serious safety hazards that were identified that we've used, and were, at the time, we also had one that was a temporary safety hazard, which is on Grand Avenue right over by the forty-one overpass. For a couple of years, we've used that kind of as a temporary safety hazard, just because we do know it's dangerous in there. And Gene's been keeping an eye on that all year to try to see if it's indeed, through the tabulation of points and whatnot, whether it could be considered a permanent serious safety hazard. So by permanent, I mean at least established it for now. So our recommendation, she's, wants to identify that that one as our seventh serious safety hazard, and kind of have it be a permanent, more permanent one added to the list, so. I think you guys know where it is over there.
It's a safety hazard when you're in your car, much less walking. And that's, by the way, the improved intersection, just to be clear, not the, I don't know what really improved, but.
Yeah.
If you can beat the red lights, because there's like, yeah, good, you're lucky. Wholeheartedly agree.
All right, then I move to approve the amended serious safety hazards for the, this says for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year as presented.
That is correct. It is for this year. The good thing, or the, generally speaking, you'd say, why are we doing this now? Well, generally speaking, those safety hazards are, will come back again in the fall, generally as as, you know, recommendations for next year as well.
Second.
Mr. Drake?
Motion by Anderson and second by Drake. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Drake? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Old business.
All right, we are on to old business. We have a couple of things to just talk about briefly. One is one of the things under the district property discussion at our last meeting, and we're making progress on this, it's just that we don't have everything. The board had asked us for about, on the Stern School Road property, about having an appraisal done, which we do have a, Mike and I have a phone call tomorrow with a person who's doing the appraisal line. We don't have a number for you tonight, we want to make sure we ask questions and understand that, but that process certainly by our June meeting, we hope to have something more tangible for the board in terms of appraisal. But we did get some information back in regards to the sixth, the, at the time, back in two thousand ten, the six thousand undeveloped acres. We did get a response back, and Michael can review that with you.
Yeah, it's actually an interesting response here from Lake County, because they did everything by the square foot from their GIS team for vacant land. They had two hundred and thirty-five million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-one square feet of vacant land in Warren Township, and this does not include tax-exempt lands such as villages, parks, forest preserves, state parks, conservation areas, wetlands, et cetera. Just to give a total, Warren Township, including, not including those, but entirety of it, is one billion, four hundred and fifty-one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two square feet, which means, okay, I'm getting through there, okay? So which means that right now, sixteen point two four percent of Warren Township is considered vacant, yet still buildable land. With that being said, if we take that vacant land, that two hundred and thirty-five million, six hundred and nineteen thousand square feet, it comes up to fifty-four hundred and nine acres, equivalent of eight point four five square miles of land. And just simple math calculations on half-acre home sites, including roads, easements, and utilities, still leaves approximate home sites of ten thousand, eight hundred and eighteen home sites still available in Warren Township.
So from, what was it, to fifty-four hundred? So from six thou, approximately, you know, approximately six thousand down to, yeah, fifty-four hundred.
Still a lot, though.
Yep. So we, at least that's one number for the board, it was something that, you know, well, I'm sure it's, that's a helpful number, because it helps put some context. And in our next meeting, maybe we'll, we'll review that number, but we'll also hopefully by then have some appraisal based on that. Sound good?
Yep.
So that's an update on that item. We, under the return to school item, again, we don't have much update on in regards to return to school. We're thankful, it looks like we're gonna get through the next three days, and I hope so, so we are, and that's a lot, that's really due to a lot of hard work for this year as a whole, just by, you know, our health service staff, our administration, and all of our staff, and our kids all working together. So it's been a great year, all in, and we're happy, we're so happy that we've been able to get so many things done in a much more normal way, and celebrate our school much more like it's been, and it should be so. Thanks to your board, the board's leadership in that regard as well. Referendum information, just a few things on, all right, I'll pass these, Mr. Demonte, can you pass this around? Just to make sure the board, you probably got one of these at your house, or you might have, but there was a, that was our second district mailer that went on out on about May thirteenth. So sometimes those things, people say, I didn't see, and then they realize that maybe it was at their house, but we didn't want to at least pass those around. We've got extras of those in the district office. Thanks to Mr. Drake for arranging and coming to our May eleventh presentation at the Widesworth Village Hall, neat little village hall, really neat little venue to have our presentation in, and some good questions by individuals there, so that was nice to have. We did, as I mentioned in our last meeting, the question has been posted, the formal question, the referendum question on our website and on our doors at our building, so that's out there, as well as, we've got it now on some other documents. We're still doing Starbucks Saturdays, that's been great. We've had some really, people come up with some great questions or concerns, or just curiosities about referendum information, so that's, words getting out there, and people have stopped, it's been great. Appreciate the board's support and presence at those meetings. And we have next, our next presentation will be at our Oak Plain Auditorium. We started kind of at Alman, and we're finishing kind of at Oak Plain, so the English presentation, I'm sorry, the Spanish presentation's at six-thirty, and English is at seven o'clock PM in the auditorium on June first. And then on June the eighteenth, that's a Saturday, June the eighteenth, from eleven to one. So this is sponsored by the Student Alliance, the Black Student Union leadership, they've kind of evolved into referencing it just as the Student Alliance here. But it's our student-sponsored voter registration event, so that's, it's a voter registration drive at Viking Park from eleven to one. Looks like they've got a lot of fun things going on, and the kids have worked hard. Looks like they've got a lot of fun things going on, and the kids have worked hard to put that together, and just try to encourage informed and active voters. So that's going on on the eighteenth. So.
Early voting is open at the township, I believe, or at the Village Hall.
When did that, so I went there the other day, and it wasn't open yet. Do you know?
Oh, June thirteenth, I'm sorry.
Gotcha.
You can vote at the Lake County Building right now.
The county clerk. And we are still, if there's still any between now, obviously, and we still intend on having our last presentation be a kind of a, you know, just-in-time remote webinar on or about the twenty-second of June, just because if anybody hasn't seen our presentation, and they're just now, you know, figuring out there's an election that following week, we'll have the same presentation given, but it'll just be done remotely on the twenty-second of June that will also be added to our list. Anything else? Pat, Chris, Mike?
This effort by everybody. Just really a lot of hard work. I see all the pictures and posts and everything else. So thanks to everybody for everything everybody's doing.
We had a guy come by the coffee on Saturday. He was a very interesting man. He runs Safeway? Is that what it was? Yeah, Lucky, whatever his name is. But anyway, he was all, he just heard about it, and he used to live next door to Natalia. I don't know how he just heard about it, because Natalia talks to everybody, but he just heard about it, and he was just like incensed that this was happening. He said, we have to make this pass. We go, well, we can't say much, because we're working for the school right now. But he was, you know, give me signs, I'll put them up all over town. I don't care. I'm ready to go. I put signs up all week, because he promotes, he tries to hire drivers who post some signs all over. So he said, I'll post signs. I post signs every day. I'll post signs for you. You got any signs? I go, as a matter of fact, I have five in my truck. But anyway, just, and another, another two families stopped, and all positive, just really good. It'd be good conversation. I mean, they knew their information, too. They had, they weren't just saying, oh, yeah, I'm bored. They knew the details, and they knew everything. So it was, it was just kind of rewarding to have people come up and already have, you know, the information and knew it well. So that was, that was good. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, and one thing, even the specific questions that came out, that we've posted now on our FAQ and the referendum information, at our Wadsworth presentation, a gentleman very clearly articulated to us that, you know, you can talk about the, you know, the fair market value of your home, right? And, but people don't, they may not know that that's, you know, explicitly off your tax bill, right? Because they might just be thinking about the market value of your home, or what your neighbor says they can sell their house for, or what you might think your house would be worth if you did sell it. And so it was just a very, for us, it was just a good learning tool about, you know, we told them, we'll post that just so people know that. You know, that's, that's what it means explicitly on your tax bill, so make sure you're, yeah, just, it's right.
Yeah, it's based on the, he was extremely knowledgeable and helped many of his neighbors understand. He basically said, we could be overstating the impact for people if they think it's a calculation against the market value versus the assessed value. And he had like decimal numbers he was quoting. He knew his information.
Yeah, for sure. It was good. Well, we will keep working, trying to make sure that the community has enough information regarding the referendum and the impact it will have on our school district and our students. So we'll keep working. I think that's it.
Then we have another reception of visitors. So is there anybody here that would like to address the board? I don't see anybody. All right, then. If there's nothing more, then I move, we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Ms. Beals?
Motion by Anderson and second by Beals. Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte? Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.